...of August 9th, 2023 was, we will start with the roll call.
Commissioner Ryan.
Brian.
Use your mic.
Here.
Commissioner Combs.
Here.
Commissioner Graff.
Here.
Commissioner McKenzie. Commissioner Stoneman.
Here.
Commissioner Duretsky.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda are the minutes of 6:14, 2023. Were there any changes, corrections to those minutes? Hearing none. The minutes for 6:14, 2023 are approved. And now correspondence. I'm not sure who to ask. Who are correspond... Do I ask Mr. Combs? Ms. Graege?
There is no correspondence.
Okay. Next is new business, item D. Port of Anacortes requests for reconsideration of shoreline substantial development permit, SDP 2023-0002 for Curtis Wharf Dash... Dash, Second Street. And do we have... Okay. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Commissioners, members of the public. My name's Grace Pollard. I'm the Senior Planner for the Community Environment. Oh, that was a college reference. Planning Community and Economic Development Department. And we have just a couple quick, kind of top points of information and a refresher on the code that allows for a request for reconsideration. And then we will leave it in the Commissioners' hands to deliberate. I have an easy little visual here for us. So tonight's request for reconsideration, just to clarify, has not reopened the public hearing on the port shoreline substantial development permit. The hearing is closed and the decision is still in effect. The information provided in the agenda packet is the only information that will be presented to you tonight. I've created a couple slides that just break down the Anacortes Municipal Code that addresses reconsideration. In subsection A, it reads, "A party to the underlying decision may seek reconsideration only of a final decision by filing a written request alleging specific errors on a form provided by the department within 10 days of the date of decision." The port was timely with their request for reconsideration, and this requirement was met. Subsection, excuse me, subsection B states, "The decision-maker must consider the request without public comment or argument by the party filing the request." So again, this is not a public hearing. There will not be any presentations regarding the request before you tonight. It's just a public meeting for the Commissioners to deliberate the request. The second half of subsection B reads, "Reconsideration may be granted only when a material legal error has occurred or a material factual issue has been overlooked that would change the previous decision." Again, the Commissioners are free to openly discuss among yourselves and deliberate the request for reconsideration. Subsection B1 states, "If the request is denied, the previous action will be final. If the request is denied, the port's appeal to City Council will move forward, exhausting all local remedies." Subsection B2 states, "If the request is granted, the decision-maker may revise and reissue its decision or may call for argument in accordance with the procedures for a closed-record appeal." During discussion, Commissioners find that they would like to ask the applicant or the city any questions. You may make a motion to grant the request for reconsideration and schedule a closed-record hearing. The alternative then is, if you would, if the request is granted, to clarify what revisions are to be made, and then we will reissue the decision. So again, the request granting is two options. One is a final action tonight without any additional argument. The other is scheduling a closed-record appeal hearing for additional argument. And unless there's any procedure questions, that concludes my part of the presentation.
Questions? For Ms. Pollard.
So I guess back to your point about a, that for reconsideration has to be a factual or legal error. What, what were the errors, I guess, that caused the request?
I can leave that back up on the screen.
Yes.
While you deliberate, if that was helpful. But yes, that is what you are asked to do tonight.
Okay. So how would we like to proceed? Point of order, this isn't an open meeting. Or, excuse me, it's not a public hearing meeting. How would, how would Commissioners like to proceed?
I have, I just have a couple questions, because I mean, I'm coming into this, where I'm coming into, into this issue. Have we been presented with any additional information? I mean, I was looking along and how that's gonna, like, any of the impacts of the Third Avenue and any of the impacts, because we're gonna, obviously, Second Avenue, the access is gonna...
Can you speak into the microphone?
The access is gonna be removed there off Second Avenue by, by granting this to the port. And then we're having the issues with Third Avenue? Is that correct on...
So, so what I'm maybe thinking might be helpful is for the public to know, first of all, that we have quite a few documents from CSD attorneys at law that explain positions of contesting, basically, decision that was made. And we have the city's response to each one of those. So toward the end of our packet, I have a document that's from the City of Anacortes Planning Community and Economic Development that outlines in quite a bit of detail the different issues that the port has and the responses that the city has. And then, I mean, if you're interested in this, then we could maybe discuss them one by one, and we'll get to that Third Avenue situation as well. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Can't quite tell. Sir, sir, I know that you would like to speak, and at this point, I'm not going to open it up to you. You can listen to the conversation that we're having right now, but because this is not an opportunity for speak, speaking, I'm not going to open it to you at this moment. Sorry. So gentlemen, are you okay with this?
Yes.
Yes. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I'm not sure. It's, it's not clear to me whether or not, so we're discussing whether or not to reconsider.
Yes.
Do we know there was a material error or a material factual issue that was overlooked? Or is that what we're trying to determine right now?
I think that's what we're trying to determine.
Okay.
Yes. Okay. Let's go down through here. And if, if gentlemen would like... You, excuse me, you are out of order. I've told you that twice now or three times. So you are out of order. And so I can't allow you to speak. That's not fair to the process, and it's not fair to this request for reconsideration. So if, if the audience would like copies of this document, you have one copy, is there anybody that would like a copy of the document that we're gonna walk through? We'd be more than happy to give it to you so that you can walk through it with us. I'm just, in fact, I'm just gonna start by, I'm just gonna start by reading some of this document for the background. And if there's something that is factually incorrect, let us know. On June 14th, 2023, the Planning Commission approved the Port of Anacortes's application for shoreline, for a shoreline substantial development permit subject to conditions. On July 21st, 2023, the Port of Anacortes submitted a formal request for reconsideration of the decision. Actually, I think that letter was a letter for reconsideration and an appeal. And so these two things are being separated out because we don't have the authority for an appeal. Correct?
Martin, what page are you on so I can let them know? Forty-three? Thank you.
Okay. Can I go on? Okay. The procedure and criteria for review of a request for reconsideration are outlined in AMC 19 dash, 19 dot 20 dot 200 that Ms. Pollard just explained. As a decision-maker, the Planning Commission is the appropriate body to consider the request. The request is scheduled to be considered today. The Planning Commission must consider the request for reconsideration without public comment or argument by the party filing the request. That's, that's the reason, I'm sorry, I'm being hard-nosed, but we must do it without your comment. Reconsideration may be granted only when a material legal error has occurred or a material factual issue has been overlooked that would change the previous decision. So two things. A material legal error or a material factual issue. The Port of Anacortes has asserted that there were procedural and permit condition errors. The specific alleged errors and requested relief are outlined in the Port of Anacortes's letter dated July 21st, 2023, and I think that's in your packets. Okay? The next sentence is, "Staff opposes the port's opinion that any procedural or permit conditions were made in error of the review, consideration, or decision of shoreline substantial development permit, SDP 2023-0002. Below are excerpts from the port's request for reconsideration and appeal." Following each argument by the port is a response from city staff. And so we're going to hear the port's argument, and we're going to hear the response from the city staff for each area, and then we'll have a conversation about each one. Fair? Okay. Okay, number one says, "Appeal process." Excerpt from Port's Anacortes request letter, "Appeal process." What this doesn't say. Check this one, Ms. Pollard.
All right, could you go back and clarify what you're asking?
I'm just trying to, I'm trying to be fair and say, here's what the port is saying is a material or factual error, and then what the city's response. Under number one, I don't see the port's...
On, on page forty-four?
Yep.
Yeah, it just, it just says excerpt, but then it doesn't have anything listed.
Pull it up. Someone else, does anyone else have the form already pulled up that you can share?
I do, but I might, I might be able to share my screen.
I think this is just referring to reconsideration versus appeal. And I might be able to find it in the port's letter.
And you're reading from the staff responses or from the port's request?
Well, in each of the other ones, it looks like there's an excerpt from the port's letter.
Can I come?
And then, then there's a response.
So for full transparency, if you want to go through the port's request, I would pull up their Exhibit A, which is the request for reconsideration, which is the full document from the port. The Exhibit B, staff responses, is not going to address every single item that the port included.
Well, your response on number one is about the appeal process. Their request, in their letter dated July 21st, the request for reconsideration and appeal of permit conditions. So their request, it looks like, in their request is to reconsider its recent approval as, as submitted. And it's, it's, looks like the port, at least initially, thought that the request for reconsideration was the same as an appeal, is what it looks like.
So I can, I can just clarify the intent of staff's response there.
Okay.
Is taking the port's section on their page two. That starts the section, Roman numeral one, "Appeal Process." And so that is what the staff's first response is regarding.
Perfect. Got it. So, so gentlemen, the staff response is this. So the, the port, go back. The port is asking for a reconsideration slash appeal. What we are doing tonight is a reconsideration, but not an appeal. So the, the city's response, the staff response, is this. Code interpretations of the appeal process for shoreline permits is outside the purview of a request for reconsideration. The local appeal process for a type III PC Planning Commission decision of a substantial development permit will be heard before City Council. So it's not in our purview. Discussion?
I think that sounds pretty straightforward. Again, just not an appeal. I mean, okay.
Okay. The next point that the port has made is item number two, "Public hearing and procedural errors." And in this, the port is saying, "On May 24th and June 14th, public hearings were held to discuss the port's application for a shoreline substantial development permit." After the time, I'm just kind of skipping a little bit here. After the port's review on May 30th, the port submitted to the city a request to modify conditions. Present, so on May 24th, there was a public hearing. I think we just had a continuation, if I'm not mistaken. Is that right? And then in between that time, the port asked us, asked to reconsider, to modify the conditions to this agreement. And... And provided recommendations and the reasoning behind those recommendations for revisions to the city's conditions. In response to the port's May 30th comment letter, on June 6th, 2023, the city issued its revised recommendations. So there was a conversation between the city and the port, and some revisions were made. These revised recommendations, however, were never sent to the port ahead of time, ahead of the final June 14th hearing. Therefore, the port was deprived of any opportunity to engage with the city on the proposed conditions. So that would be a procedural error. The staff response is that in Exhibit C, there is an email that the port was provided the complete agenda packet, including the revised recommendations via email, the morning of June 9th, 2023. Comments? Okay. So that's, so there, there was opportunity. Now we're on to number three. Excerpt from the port's letter. This is what it says. This is an excerpt from the letter from the port. "I, along with the port's staff, attended the June 14th virtual public hearing to address the port's concerns regarding the conditions in the city staff report and revised recommendations. However, at the hearing, the Planning Commission did not afford the port an opportunity to comment on these issues. This resulted in the Planning Commission acting on an incomplete and inaccurate information. I and the port staff participated online and had our hands raised on the remote hearing, but the Planning Commission did not allow us to speak prior to moving to a vote. It's unclear why the city would repeatedly ignore the port's efforts to engage. Moreover, as the applicant and project proponent, the port ought to have been afforded the opportunity to address the Planning Commission and correct the record. As a result of the June 14th hearing, on June 23rd, the port issued another letter directly to Darcy Swetnam, the city attorney, the City of Anacortes's city attorney. The port's June 23rd letter was written in an effort to further explain how the inaccurate information conveyed to the Planning Commission has resulted in permit conditions that are not in line with the already established ILA between the port and the city." So here's the response from the city staff. "The named contact person for the port on the submitted shoreline substantial development permit application, Kevin Anderson, was present at the June 14th hearing and spoke at the podium." The port's legal counsel, Tim, and I'm sorry, I might say your name wrong. Is it, I'm not, I... Pardon? Schermetzler, thank you, was virtually present at the June 14th hearing and spoke on behalf of the port for approximately eight minutes, addressing... And I won't read everything, but there were four different things that you spoke to us about. Five different things that you spoke to us about. Should I read that?
I mean, I think the point of their thing was that they weren't allowed to discuss. And I mean, I was at that meeting also, and there was absolutely discussion, so I, I'm not, that's not true.
So bottom line here, the city recognizes that there were virtual attendees with their hands up, indicating the request to speak before the Commissioners, before the Commissioners made a motion for a vote. However, the city does not acknowledge that the Commission is required to provide unlimited time to the applicant for comments prior to making a motion. Based on the request for reconsideration, no new information beyond what was already provided during the hearing has been brought forward. What do you want to say about that?
I, I mean, again, I said, I was at the June 14th meeting. We had the rep here. We had the lawyer on the virtual, had a, spoke for a pretty long time. I don't think there was any attempt or anything from anyone not to allow people to have their say. So I, I just, I disagree with that statement. I agree with the staff response.
Mr. Ryan?
Yeah. Have they, has the port made any efforts in good faith to supply us with that alternative public access improvement plan? I mean...
Say one more time.
Has the port provided us with, in good faith, of going, hey, what we're requesting here is that alternative public access plan? I mean, that's, that's kind of a giving back to the city for taking from the city the uses of the, of our city streets. And, I mean, I didn't see if there was that in here, and I'm not exactly sure if they're waiting, if they're trying not to supply this to us, or they're gonna supply this to us. And then when is that timeline? Because, you know, I was reading, I was reading along, and anyways, one of the, one of the arguments from the attorney about, they didn't seem it was fair that they should do any improvements on Third Street. And so I was like, well, what's the point?
Well, I, I skipped the, the main points that Mr. Schermetzler spoke to us about. But number one is the port's position that the alternative public access improvement plan requirement of the SMP is not triggered by the proposed project. What he's saying is there's a right-of-way agreement on Second Street that was, I think, last February? Is that true? Between the city and the port? Let's see.
What's the, what's the, pardon me, what's, what was the term on that agreement?
Mr. Ryan, do you have a question?
Yeah, well, what was the term on that agreement for the right-of-way usage by the port on Second? And was it?
How many years?
Two years, five years? Or was it just that, hey, we're gonna ask for now until you guys say no?
For, so the agreement was for 30 years and with options for an additional, up to 20 additional years. But was this, does that answer your question?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other discussion about item three?
Really what we're trying to determine is, was there a legal or a procedural error, right?
Correct.
Would, that would cause us to wanna...
Yes.
Reconsider, right?
Correct.
I guess in the June 15th meeting, I was surprised with the, the speed at which we closed out the public comment. So I, I, I would move that we, we reconsider and, and get full comment from the port. I don't, I don't know that it's gonna do, do us any, I don't, I don't think it's gonna hurt us to do that, and I don't know that, and it may actually help, in the long run, the city resolve this issue. So that's, I would move that.
Okay. So your, the motion is to reconsider the, reconsider the reconsider?
I guess my motion would be to open up reconsideration based on the June 15th meeting, a possible, and, you know, that's up for debate probably, but, you know, potential or perceived lack of, or failure, procedural error.
Okay. Is there a second?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I was just gonna make a procedural point, that the, that the Commission can grant the request for reconsideration and, and have another closed-record hearing on the proposal. So that, that could be your motion.
Chairman, I recommend that we grant the request for reconsideration and have another closed session. Executive closed session.
Closed record here.
Closed record here.
Okay. Is there a second?
Can you refresh me on closed record? What, what that type of... Can you refresh me on closed record, what, what that type of meeting is?
Closed record would mean that the, the parties who participated in the underlying permit discussion would be able to provide information about, about what was already in the record. So it would allow the applicant the opportunity to, you know, to provide additional information related to stuff that's in the record already. It wouldn't open it up to the public for, you know.
Okay, but we can talk to, then they would get to talk to us.
Correct.
Okay.
So there's a motion on the table. Is there a second? Okay, there's a motion by Mr. McCombs, a second by Mr. Dretzky. Let's do a roll call vote on this.
Commissioner Ryan?
Madam Chair, before you call a vote, can, can we get some clarification, though, on what impact this would have on the rest of the proceedings that we're currently going through? If we make a motion right now to entertain another closed record meeting, does that essentially mean that this process goes away and we basically start over on the 14 June meeting?
I believe what it means is that you would go back to a, a closed record hearing, and then the planning commission would issue another decision at the end of that process.
Okay.
So if you wanted to, to, you know, if the, if the planning commission's position didn't change, you know, then, then the decision that you've already made could, could, you know, be, be redone. But if the additional information that was gathered through the closed record hearing process changed the planning commission's decision, you'd have the opportunity to make that change.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I, one, one more question.
Mr. Ryan.
So if we go, do we have to do the reconsideration, vote for reconsideration to, to have that questions and the answers between us and the port? And that would be for this, this evening?
The code, and Grace, Paulard, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe what the code says is that the planning commission can either deny the request for reconsideration and, and the underlying decision stands, it can grant the request for reconsideration and reopen the closed hearing, or grant the request for reconsideration and, I think, change the underlying decision. So really, the only opportunity in the code to have additional testimony before the commission from the port or its representatives would be to grant the request for reconsideration and reopen that closed record hearing.
Any other discussion? So I have a question for Mr. McCombs. So the reason to, I think that this is right, nullify the, the decision and the work that was done at the last meeting is to give the port one more opportunity to offer more information or different information?
I would say that it, they, the port perceives that there was a procedural error and that they didn't get to, to completely comment on, on the plan. And so I, I believe it would, this would allow them to make full public comment, or full comment on the plan to the planning commission and, and relieve the city of any perceived, or any procedural error. Does that make sense?
Okay, so Ms. Pollard, again, I know we have a motion on the floor. I know that in May, we were planning to make a decision, and the port asked us to wait. And so we waited, the port gave us additional information on the 30th, and we modified recommendations on the 30th of May. Refresh me about the rest of the timeline. So I know that we've had a couple of opportunities, just before I vote, I, I know I wanna know.
So the original, the open hearing began on that May date, and it was not closed, it was continued, and to the June 14th.
So there was an opportunity for the port and anybody else to give comment at that time?
Yes.
Okay?
In both dates. And then during that June 16th date, that's the, the day that the decision was made, all correspondence that the city had received from the port were, was included in the agenda packet. So you had the written, and then during the hearing, the oral opinions and, and requests from the port in that June 14th hearing.
And those were offered, if I'm reading the minutes right, we had that open meeting, the public hearing, and there were no comments during that public hearing, the latest public hearing. And then after the close of that public hearing, as the commission began deliberating, there were, there was both an in-person gentleman and a online gentleman who contributed, from the port, who contributed to that conversation, just, just to give more information, you know, give them more opportunity, I think. Is that true?
Yes, we didn't receive any public comments outside of the applicant during the open record public hearing.
Yeah.
And then the hearing was closed, and additional discussion, presentation was provided by the port contacts and, and representatives. Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to add one thing to clarify the motion. So the code says that reconsideration may be granted only when a material legal error has occurred or a material factual, factual issue has been overlooked. That would change the previous decision, so if the planning commission moves forward with the motion, there needs to be some binding in that decision of what that material legal or factual error was to support that decision.
Thank you for that.
Sure.
So we have a motion on the table, and Sherri, would you mind reading that motion back to us?
There was a motion to reconsider the port's original request to get full comment from the port. Revised motion is to grant the request for reconsideration, hold, hold a closed record hearing, was the revised motion.
Okay.
By Commissioner McCombs and Dr. Dretzky.
Okay, any further discussion?
I, I don't know, I guess, I, I mean, I.
Mr. Stone.
I'm torn. I, I mean, I, I don't like, I don't like the idea of anyone walking away feeling like they didn't get their full say, but I, I don't, I don't think this meets the, the legal bounds for reconsideration, so I, I mean.
Mr. Graff.
Madam Chair, yeah, I, I was gonna say that perhaps, you know, based on material or factual error, doesn't necessarily, the, the opinion that Mr. McCombs had on not providing enough time probably doesn't trip that requirement. You know, if we don't wanna rescind the motion, then perhaps maybe we could table the motion, continue on with the process, and perhaps maybe we'll find some other reason for us to reconsider the motion on some other grounds, and we can just move along, and then not close out the meeting right until we resolve the, the motion that's on the floor.
Okay, you're kind of beyond me a little bit. I'm not so sure you can table a motion for.
Well, we have legal counsel present.
Yes.
That could provide some advice.
I, I certainly think you could table the motion for, for the, pending the remainder of the discussion about the reconsideration request.
Is that okay with you, Mr. McCombs?
Absolutely.
Is that okay with you, Mr. Dretzky?
I recommend we table the motion.
Oh. Okay, we have friendly recommendations, I think we're gonna move forward. This is the most complicated meeting, you have a novice doing the most complicated meeting.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Where are we? We finished number three, I think. Okay, number four is issue number three, under, on the letter from the port, permit condition errors and requested relief. Condition number, this is from the port. The port, condition number one, the port shall produce and submit a phase one design proposal of the N hour, N Avenue Beach connection referenced in the Port of Anacortes Integrated Approach. Something, I need to read the whole thing. So the port is alleging there is an error here, the imposition of this condition is not consistent with or provided for within the SMP and amounts to an exaction. The staff responses, it's the opinion of staff, that applicable shoreline management program policies and development regulations were applied appropriately. Staff stands by the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and recommendations of the staff report for shoreline substantial development permit. Comments? Thoughts?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Graff.
So this is where I think I need some clarification on the, so nowhere in any of these documents or any of these proposals can I find Third Street mentioned, right? And I'm wondering, does Third Street come into play when we start talking about the N Avenue Beach and the improvement for that area? Yes?
I think so.
And then, and, and I, and i- is there a 200-foot watermark line or something that perhaps, in our opinion, includes Third Avenue, and in the port's opinion, perhaps, doesn't include Third Avenue, and that's why we're kind of in this situation? Is there a map, perhaps, that we can bring up to kind of help visualize this? But unfortunately, the map that was included in the documentation kind of cuts off Third Avenue between the, the area of, of concern?
My, my concern in answering your question is that we'd be providing argument, so I want to make sure.
Well, maybe you could, maybe, I mean, maybe you could restate the question as, as kind of a question about stuff that's in the, the staff report.
What is the definition of the N Avenue Beach? What does that include?
The, are you referring to the, the plan?
I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to establish and develop some context here as to why the city and the port are at odds with regards to what the 2003 negotiated plan was, and perhaps the 2022 February handshake with regards to, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna let you do this over here, and the expectation is that you're gonna do this for us over here, kind of a thing, and for, again, correct me if I'm wrong here, there's some misunderstanding or misinterpretation on the, on what is included in each of the party's responsibilities or expectations.
The way, the way I understand it, and I'm trying just to restate information that, you know, staff have provided, is, you know, the, the port and the city entered into a, a right-of-way use agreement that allowed the port to use the public right-of-way in Second Street without there being a vacation. And the, through the, through the shoreline substantial development permit requirement, the shoreline master plan requires some provisions for alternative access to the beach area that's now no longer going to be accessible by the public. And so I think it, from Second Street, correct. There is an access point to that, to that beach off of N Avenue, and I think that's what you're talking about. And I, and I think that the idea is that the public, rather than being able to go to that beach directly through Second Street, now will go around Third Street to access N Avenue on the beach. And I think the condition that was added to this was an intention to try to capture and articulate what that alternative access improvement needed to be. It was staff's opinion that that was something that was properly required by the shoreline master plan, and, and I think the port has concerns about that because they're offsite improvements. And I'm not trying to, you know, capture the port's arguments, but I, I believe that's what the issue is, I don't know if that helps.
Yeah, and that's the kind of the takeaway that I've got from this as well, that the city's expectation on what our interpretation of the shoreline management plan, if I've got that right, and what the port's understanding of what the negotiated agreement was differ now, right? And we're, our expectation now has ratcheted up the requirements that the port has for improvements. Is it, is it the decision that was made by the planning commission, or is it the wording in the shoreline management plan, or is it two parties just can't come to, to a reasonable solution here? Well, maybe we should go to executive session, perhaps, and talk about, I mean, no? Okay, so.
I don't know if we need a motion, just would like a general consensus. There are some specific reasons that entity like this could go into an executive session, one of which would be with our attorney, pending litigation or threats of litigation, and that would be a valid reason for an executive session, in which case, what would happen for the audience here is that we would set a time limit and tell you that we would go into an executive session with our attorney for X amount of time, and then come, and no action can be taken during that executive session, and then we would return. So what is the feeling of the commission?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I believe I can answer that question in open session. I think that the city was negotiating with the port for some period of time on that agreement for Second Street. The port had, at some, at some point, requested that the city entertain a vacation, and the, you know, kind of the, the direction was steered towards this right-of-way use agreement. The, the agreement included language that said that when the port does something with that area, they will, they will have to get permits, and one of the requirements of the shoreline master plan is that this alternative pedestrian access be provided for. And so the city has taken the position that, you know, because the agreement provided for the requirement that there be permits for any type of permitted use, that, and this is provided in the shoreline master plan, that, that the port should have to get the permit and comply with those conditions that were identified through the process.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd also like to just refer back to the staff report. I think that the findings of fact will provide you with.
Yeah. No, I, Madam Chair, I, I think she's done a, a great job of clearing, I mean, there was some very specific language used in the port's response.
Right.
That caused me some pause as to, okay, what's going on here? But you cleared it up for me, and I think I'm, I'm ready, we can go forward without an executive session.
Okay.
Commissioner Graff? I think one of the things that I, I've noticed about that is it seems like they don't. I think one of the things that I've noticed about that is it seems like they don't want to do this as far as the attorney's letter where they say, "We are in negotiations. We don't want to go into litigations." But we're not in negotiations anymore because the city's imposing these requirements on the port now. Is it an imposition, so now they're thus asking for them to do the niceties on Third Avenue by doing some of those improvements is an imposition on them, even though we're taking the loss on the street? So I don't know if that, and that looks like it's conflict, it's very conflicting to me.
I think I'm moving forward. Okay? All right. Excerpt from Port of Anacortes Request Letter, Condition Number Two. Per condition of approval, number one, the required Phase One Plan of N Avenue Beach Connection shall be submitted to the Planning, Community and Economic Development Department prior to subject project completion and shall be installed within one year of approval. The port is contending, this error is not consistent with the shoreline master, is it plan, program? And improperly delegates the planning commission's authority to condition this SSDP to city staff and further condition the project after the issuance of the permit. And the port is asking to remove this condition. The city staff response, it's the opinion of staff, that applicable shoreline master program policies and development regulations were applied appropriately. Staff stands by the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and recommendations of the staff report for shoreline substantial development permit, and lists the number. Do we have questions for the city staff? More comments?
I mean, I think this is just back to Mr. Graff's point, that the basic disagreement, you know, between the, between the city and the port over, over what, what constitutes the previous agreement. Feels like it comes down to a question of, is the staff right or are they right or is there some other answer?
Okay, I'm going to move on then. Number six. Excerpt from the port's Anacortes Request Letter, Condition Number Three. The port shall, this is from the port. The port shall produce and submit the complete N Avenue Beach Connection Plan to the Planning, Community and Economic Development Department for review and permit approval. I think what Ms. Wetnam is talking about, the approval. Prior to or concurrently with the establishment of a new or expanded use or development on Curtis Wharf, the Second Street right-of-way, or within the port's adjacent Quiet Cove Laydown Lot, or within five years of the subject project completion, whichever is sooner. The port contends the error. This condition is not consistent with the SMP and improperly delegates the planning commission's authority to condition this SSDP to city staff and further condition the project after the issuance of the permit. And the port is asking that this condition is removed. The staff response is that it's the opinion of staff that the applicable shoreline master program policies and development regulations were applied appropriately. Staff stands by the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and recommendations of the staff report. As Mr. Stoneman said, this is, again, a disagreement for sure. Questions to try and clarify? Otherwise, I'm moving on. Excerpt from number seven. This is grounds for appeal. And this.
That looks like the same as from at the start, I think.
Pardon?
I think you can go to the next one. That looks like the same response from earlier.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch what you said, Mr. Stoneman.
The one at the top, where we had the grounds for appeal also? I'm just saying this is the same, same wording for, for both of them. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to let you not have to read it, that's all, but you can. It's okay.
Oh, I see. The same as the number one, grounds for appeal. Okay. So the staff response is grounds for appeals are outside the purview of a request for reconsideration. The local appeal process for a Type III PC Planning Commission decision of a substantial development permit will be heard before the city council. So yes, that's saying the same thing. Number eight, from the port. Conclusion and next steps. The port says, "It is clear to the port that the permit conditions are purely a result of the city's desire to exact from the port improvements to the existing public access on Third Street beyond what is justified to mitigate for the project, in some cases wholly outside of the shoreline jurisdiction. Simply put, these conditions are nothing more than a quote, 'bootstrapped attempt' on the part of the city to get the port to improve city property. If the city was concerned about improvements to Third Street, it should have negotiated the same at the time that Second Street right-of-way use agreement was executed back in February 2022." The port contends, a next paragraph, "It's both inappropriate and unlawful for the city to now, over a year later, put the burden of designing, funding, and executing the city's desired improvements on the port by way of an SSDP that does not even concern the Third Street area. The city's attempts to shift responsibility for these improvements on the port is made even more egregious, given the city's SMP plainly states that the SMP regulations do not apply of the, to areas of the development project which lie outside of shoreline jurisdiction. In consideration of the above and the identical factual and procedural errors on the part of the city, the city must revise the permit conditions. As indicated above, the port is prepared to appeal this determination in the appropriate venue, which the port believes is a different venue from the, the city. The port thinks it's the shoreline hearings board. The city is saying that the appeal process for a Type III PC Planning Commission decision of a substantial development permit will be heard before the city council. Once the city council has issued their decision on the appeal, the final decision will be sent to the Department of Ecology and the Attorney General's Office, at which time the port can file an appeal with the shoreline hearings board." So a little different process from what the port thought. The last part, again, these are just excerpts from the port. "The port still wishes to arrive at a negotiated solution in this matter without the need for litigation. To that end, the port is willing to enter into a tolling agreement." I'd like to know what that means. "After filing the SHB appeal," which we know isn't an SHB appeal, it would be a city appeal. Here's the city staff's report. "It's the opinion of staff that only applicable shoreline master program policies and development regulations were applied to the shoreline substantial development permit, and the conditions are aligned with the shoreline master program and fully within the authority of the city to require. The burden falls on the port to provide specific errors that were made of either a material legal nature or a material factual nature. It is the opinion of staff that the port has not provided any additional points beyond those made during the June 14 hearing and those provided on the request to modify conditions presented in city staff report dated May 30. Staff stands by the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and recommendations of the staff report for the associated shoreline substantial development permit. The planning commission is to consider only material legal errors that may have occurred or a material factual issue that has been overlooked that would change the previous decision." The local appeal process, and that goes in one more time, saying that the appeal process, which is different from tonight's reconsideration process, will go first to the city council if the port chooses to appeal, whatever the reconsideration decision is tonight.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ryan.
So I'm, basically, we're all here tonight just to say, okay, did, did we screw up in that process or we didn't give them an adequate amount of time? So that's what our topic is, that we're gonna be voting on, correct?
Did we make, did we, meaning the planning commission, make a material legal error or a material factual error in the decision that has already been made? And then the answer, if no material or factual error was made, then we're going to, what's the motion? We'll make a motion to move forward, I guess. Tell me the three choices.
Sure, I think if you find that there was no material legal or factual error, then you would deny the request for reconsideration. If you found that there was a material legal or factual error, then you would grant the request for reconsideration and have a, have an additional closed record hearing to address whatever, whatever those issues were.
And if we said that there was a material factual or legal error, we would need to state what that was. So the port has laid out several things that they believe are errors, and the city has laid out that they don't believe they were errors. So it's up to us to, I guess, be like the judge. Mr. Ryan, it looks like you want to talk.
Yes, ma'am. Is, is it one of the claims that they didn't feel that they had their virtual hand up and they weren't called upon during a moment to speak? Was that one of the claims?
Yes, one of the claims was that the attorney who was online, who did have an opportunity to speak for, I think, at least eight minutes, and who did have the opportunity to make at least five different points, did not have the opportunity to say more before a motion was made.
Was, was that opportunity present? I mean, I mean, it sounds like there's a lot of time there. They had, they didn't have the chance to speak first.
I know. I made the motion, and I made the motion because I thought that I had, personally, I had heard all that I needed to hear in order to move forward, and apparently that's what the rest of the commission thought as well.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Ms. Martin.
Mr. Stoneman.
I agree with Ms. Martin, sorry, I need to wait for that. But I will say, I, I do remember Mr. McCombs abstaining that night, so, and I think maybe that was your first meeting. So I do understand if he wasn't quite as comfortable, you know, and maybe not comfortable speaking up, I don't, I don't know if that was, if that was the case. I'll throw that at you, is that, if that's, if we railroaded you, you know?
I don't believe so. I was surprised. I think it happened before I realized it was happening. And then, but the question, you know, it, even if there was a procedural error, perceived procedural error, is that a material factual error or a material legal error? And I, it probably doesn't meet that criteria, so.
I guess that's, again, where, where I'm leaning, not saying we have to put to a rate the second, have more discussion, but yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't think we've crossed that threshold. I mean, I don't, with the things laid out there, I'd be very curious to see the appeal process. Seems fair. But from, from our job tonight, I don't, I didn't see anything that says that we need to reconsider, so.
Mr. Graff, how are you leaning?
Well, I, I think, so do we need to bring back the tabled motion and just vote on that and then proceed? Maybe if we clarify that, because I think Mr. Ryan was alluding to that same concern about there not being enough time provided to the, to the port during that meeting. Unfortunately, I wasn't at that meeting, so I don't have an opinion one way or the other. So.
Hang on, I'm just gonna poll you for a little bit. Mr. Dretzky, how are you leaning? We're no, there's not a motion, we're just talking.
My recollection of that meeting was that nobody was rushed or kept from speaking. Nobody said, "That's enough, we want to vote now." I mean, which is sort of what, I mean, I read the letter from the attorney that no one was allowed to speak. Well, that's blatantly not true. Somebody was here, somebody called in or was available to state their argument. And again, nobody rushed them. I don't think we rushed to judgment on this thing. So that's my opinion of how that played out.
And Mr. McCombs, it was your first time, I think, here, wasn't it?
It was my first meeting, so I was still, and am still trying to.
Yeah.
To fall in line with the procedure, but, yeah, I was not expecting to close the public comment as soon as they did.
Okay.
So I think, so why don't we go back to Mr. McCombs' motion then, since we did table that? We probably need to, to vote on that, and then we can, don't remember exactly what it was now, but then we can move on to the final motion, if we need that. Is that fair?
Well. If you would like to bring out the tabled motion, I'd like Ms. Sherry to read it to us one more time.
Are you looking for? Madam Chair.
Yes.
Are you looking for a motion to reconsider the tabled motion for further discussion?
No. I don't believe we need that. I'm sorry, I was just trying to get it, my, my mouse wasn't moving.
Oh, okay.
We, we can be a little friendlier than that, I think, so.
So the revised motion from Commissioner McCombs was to grant the request for reconsideration and hold a closed record hearing, and Dretzky seconded.
So that actually is the option B. So your motion is an option B. And, and it will require then that we have a material or factual error that we can point to. Okay, are we ready to call for the vote? All right.
Commissioner Ryan? Commissioner McCombs?
Nay.
Commissioner Graff?
Nay.
Commissioner Stoneman?
Nay.
Commissioner Dretzky?
No.
Commissioner Martin?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, motion fails. Now, is there another motion?
So that didn't count as the final answer, now we need to vote? We need to move to deny the request for reconsideration? Is that why you're asking if there's another motion?
Mr. Stoneman, yes, you could, you could.
Okay.
Make that motion, correct?
All right. I move that we deny the request for reconsideration.
And is there a second?
I second.
Mr. McCombs, a second. Is there any discussion? Let's call for the vote.
Commissioner Ryan?
Nay.
Commissioner McCombs?
Can we clarify the motion one, one more time?
Yeah, I, I think, I don't know, yeah. So with the movement, the motion is to deny the request for reconsideration.
In other words, we're letting it stay the way it is.
So, so vote yes if you want to deny it. Right, correct? Correct.
So that, and that's because we didn't make no errors, correct? So yes would be, thank you for clarifying that, I apologize. Thank you. That's a yes.
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 Commissioner Stoneman?
Yes.
Commissioner Juretsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes. With that...
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Because this is a meeting subject to the Open Public Meetings Act, I think we skipped over the public comment section at the beginning of the meeting, or maybe it wasn't on the agenda.
It's not.
But, but the port has asked for an opportunity to provide public comment, which, under state law, they're allowed to do.
Okay. So before we do that, is there any old business? Okay, no old business, okay. Then we will open it up for public comment. Please state your name.
Yeah, I'm Dan Wora. I reside at 2405 Washington Court. I'm the executive director at the Port of Anacortes, and I want to thank each and every one of you for your consideration of this matter. You have a hard job, and we appreciate you thinking about it.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Is there anybody online? Nobody online. Okay. With that, I am closing the meeting. Thank you very much.